Would I pledge the flag, please?
Mr. Quinn, would you leave it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of our public, to the states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking time to come out. We have, this is a four o'clock special meeting. We have five, maybe possibly six items to cover in the afternoon. And we will begin. The first one will be a public hearing on three proposed ordinances. Mr. Larry, do you want to address this and be in the ordinance or let the attorney? Which way do you want to go?
Mr. Attorney has the ordinance.
He has the ordinance. Mr. Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, thank you.
Yes, sir. You have two land use ordinance consideration for you today. One is for the Gulf County School Board. The second is for Deseret Ranches. I'm going to provide the commission. You can pass it down. I'll read it by title.
Out of the please.
Just as you're all receiving it, there's been two public, there's been actually a public hearing before your planning and review board. They recommended for the land use change of less than 10 acres. And you've also now had two public hearings in front of this commission this summer. Following statutory requirements for those hearings, you instructed staff to introduce this ordinance to ratify it. Unless there's any objection from the commission, I will read it by title and then answer any questions along with the planner.
Any board objection?
Thank you, sir.
Out of the.
It reads as follows, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of Gulf County, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale land use. MAP amendment pursuant to authority under Florida Statute 163 and Statute 125 specifically amending parcel ID 04272, Section 26 Township 7 South Range 11 West, corner of Highway 98 and Redfish Street, Highland View, Gulf County, Florida, from public to mixed-use commercial residential is providing for an effective date today." As indicated, you've had a public hearing in front of your planning and review board. You've had two quasi judicial settings, which were both waived, in front of this commission. And you've accepted the recommendation of your planning board to make this land use, small-scale land use amendment change. And with your vote today, we'll ask for the chairman's signature and put this ordinance into effect.
Thank you. This is on the school.
I'll make the motion to approve. It's just formalizing everything we've already discussed and voted on.
Thank you. The motions by Commissioner Brian, second by Commissioner McLemore. Do the other board members have any discussion?
Yes, I need to abstain. Right, Mr. Novak?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Abstain.
All right, when we get to the voting, we will do that. Anyone in the audience have any comments or concerns? All right, if not, if there's no objection, this motion will pass or with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Novak. Let's go back to you. This is on the school. Now, the next one will be for Deseret cattle or how we got them.
Yes, sir. The second will be Deseret Ranches.
All right, sir.
Okay.
Lonely hippies, no objection.
The second land use application ordinance that you have in front of you is for Deseret Ranches of North Florida. There was a public hearing this summer, as well as two quasi judicial settings that were offered in front of this commission. You accepted the recommendations of the planning board to accept the recommendation for two acres to change from agriculture to residential. The ordinance reads as follows, "An ordinance amending the comp plan of Gulf County, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale land use MAP amendment pursuant to authority under Florida Statute 163 and 125 specifically amending parcel ID 03301 and 0330, Sections 23 and 24 Township 4 South Range 11 West, Jarrett Daniels Road, two acres Gulf County, Florida, from agriculture to residential." Again, you've met your statutory requirements for the notice, and this ordinance would ratify that land use change.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I have a motion.
Yes, so, back up, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Barnes, motion. Second by Commissioner McLemore. All right, is anyone on the board, any other, the board members have any terms of discussion? Anyone in the audience? No opposition? Motion passes five and oh on Deseret. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, and I think we're still with you, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we are, okay.
Okay. The final ordinance for your consideration today in public hearing will be with regards to your RV amendment. Last month, the commission voted to direct staff to introduce language that would accommodate an additional exemption under the RV ordinance. If you recall, in earlier this year, we had created an exemption for short-term rentals for recreational vehicles inside your coastal corridor. That section was ratified by this commission and it became 6C6. And as you'll see at the bottom, anything that's been changed in your ordinance, proposed language is in red. What we've offered to you is a second exemption under 6C6 with regards to long-term rentals that predated the adoption of your RV ordinance in the coastal corridor in January of 2015. Also, this one has a sunset provision in it as well. I'll read the language, Mr. Chairman, and you can offer it for public hearing. It's a pre-existing, again, it's miscellaneous provisions. The only amendment would be a pre-existing owner of a lot or parcel, as well as a lawfully registered recreational vehicle on the parcel within the coastal construction corridor prior to the original RV ordinance adoption by Gulf County on January 27, 2015, and who submits the proper application and required documentation prior to the expiration of this exception for pre-existing use and rental. The application eligibility shall sunset on December 31 of this year to the Gulf County Administration Designated Official of the Proper and Compliant Recreational Vehicle Long-Term Commercial Rental of the Parcel and Personal RV to a Third Party, including but not limited to requirements demonstrating long-term lease of the parcel and RV to the tenant that predate the Gulf County ordinance adoption by no less than six months, shall be considered for a special exemption and grandfathering for continued rental use of the parcel and RV. Upon receipt of the exemption for the continued commercial long-term rental of the RV and parcel, same shall continue in effect for the parcel and specific RV until either the discontinuation of the commercial use of the parcel for any period longer than one year, or upon any and all recorded transfer title to the exempt property for this continued pre-existing use. As I indicated, back in March 23, you all adopted an amendment to your RV ordinance allowing those that predated the RV ordinance of 2015 that had short-term rentals of their parcel. And so you provided an exemption to a select group of property owners who had collected bed tax and rented out their parcels historically prior, for up to a year prior to your RV ordinance. This provision now will provide someone that owns a parcel and that actually has an RV on that parcel as well that you heard from this summer, that will allow them to come in and ask for that exemption from the county. As long as they apply and they're qualified prior to December 31, they'll be able, they'll be permitted to continue to rent that RV on their own parcel in the coastal corridor with this language.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner McLemore. Prove this. That's your motion. Have a second to it. Second by Commissioner Barnes. All right, now let's go for the discussion.
Yep, one comment, and this is where I had to, excuse me, this is where I had to hang up at. You know, we have a couple out there, or we have an elderly lady that's had these RVs in place before we had passed this ordinance. That was giving them the additional income. When we passed the ordinance, then that knocked them out of the income. So that's where I had the hiccup about it. I'm glad, hopefully, we can get this cleared up and move on with it.
Any other?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Brian?
I'm against these carve-outs to the RV ordinance. I was in favor of grandfathering in people who lived in their RVs on their lots who had developed their lot with their RV that they lived in according to what we had in place at the time and not tossing people off of their properties. But what we really asked for last time, or, you know, what we needed was an interpretation of where we were. I don't think that we should be giving special dispensation to some folks because they have short-term rentals and not to other folks because they have long-term rentals. Whereas the long-term rental may be even more favorable in a community than somebody who's turning something over weekly, depending on the state of the RV. We have RVs that they're doing weekly rentals on or monthly rentals that are not nice RVs. You know, we talk about the nice expensive RVs, but we have little travel trailers that are rundown, that could not be pulled behind a truck, that people are renting them out to folks who pay a very low rent, and they come and go. It's very transient, and that is harmful to a community. So I'm not in favor of this. I was not in favor of the original carve-out. This was brought forward by a couple who did not have a hardship. You know, it's a couple that had put in a contract on the property that we just changed the land use on. They did put an offer in to buy the school property. So these are business folks. They're not somebody that's struggling and just getting by by the, on the rental of their RV. And as long as we continue on down this path, our community is going to suffer with the tax base, and we've dodged a bullet with this last storm. People who are grandfathered in, who live in their RVs, would be more responsible to get their RVs out of here. But if you've got short-term tenants or long-term tenants, you're going to have a much more difficult time of getting those RVs to go. So I am not in favor of this change.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything, Commissioner?
No, sir.
At this time, we go out to the public. Anyone in the public have any concerns or questions on this? Yes, sir, you have a question on this RV ordinance?
Yes.
You do, sir, please come up. Would you please state your name and address for this young lady right over here?
James Mayo, have property at 9132 Olive Avenue.
All right, Mr. Mayo, you have three minutes. You have the.
Yes, sir, I would just, I've read the ordinance. It was a little, well, it's hard to really understand it. So what you're saying here today is, these area that you're exempting, they've had short-term and long-term rentals, and they're, whatever they're doing, they're continuing, they're able to continue to do that?
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. The language would afford those individuals that own a piece of property before January of 2015 that had a lawful RV on that property and had been renting it out, the RV, to a third party for more than six months prior to January 27 of 2015. If they can demonstrate that to the county and show that that's been continuous, that rental, county is providing them an exemption, that they can continue to do that so long as the property and the RV stay there.
Okay.
My knowledge, let me, I'll hold you, I'll give you time. We only have the one down there, Mrs. Griffin. I know she was there long before.
Now, yes, 6C6, one would apply to Ms. Griffin that you adopted in March. This would now apply to folks that have a long-term rental, not a transient, as the commissioner had indicated, not weekly, and is not for the parcel. It's actually for a parcel and an RV that's on the property.
All right, Ms. Roberts? Reset this clock to, reset to three minutes.
So what I'm asking is, I have a couple of parcels up on Olive Avenue. I have had one parcel that I've had a RV on that I do rent. I do not collect the bed tax. I was unaware of how y'all wanted to do that. Five years ago, I bought this property, went through all the loops and whatever, making sure I built everything to code. I build it as an RV. This is what it looks like.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Anyway, full intentions to continue to use it as RV. There is a lot beside this that I own that I do rent out, but I do not collect the bed tax. Be glad to do that. So what I'm, first thing is, can I continue to do that? If you're allowing this one, then I should be able to continue to rent this out?
When did you start?
When did I start? Ever since I owned the property. I have two RVs.
When is that?
Five years ago. When I cleared it up, fixed it up for, I built this for the RVs, yes. Now, yes, that's what I want to know. Can I still do it? I'd be glad to collect the bed tax or whatever. So if you're going to do it for one, I mean, I guess it's open for everybody?
Legally, Mr. Attorney, will you explain this to him?
Yeah, the ordinance, the way it's been described is the ordinance would not permit it because bed tax had not been collected a year prior to the adoption of the ordinance. So you can't do it after the fact.
But, Mr. Mayo, if you had a long-term tenant in there, you were not required to collect bed tax. It would depend on the length of your tenant. If you had a lease with a tenant, you're only required to collect bed tax if it's a short-term rental.
Yes, it was, I did it during the, most of all the summer, most time it was there, but I didn't.
If you rented for a week, two weeks, something like that?
No, no, I don't do a week or two weeks, no.
This is long term.
It's mostly all during the summer, from March through September is what I did. So that would eliminate that situation?
Legally, I don't think you can do it. I'm not the attorney. Mr. Attorney, will you explain this to him?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to sit with Mr. Mayo and we'll go over it. Like I said, what he's describing right now, and I don't know whether his set of circumstances apply, because I don't know what he was renting and how long he was renting and what he was collecting, but each one will be a case-by-case evaluation by the county.
Mr. Mayo, would you do this? Would you work with our attorney? Get your information, get your dates of the time of rentals, some proof of rentals, and let the attorney get back with the board, and we'll see where we can go with it.
Well, one other question I was asked, myself, we have not been down much since last year on my part here, what I just showed you. My wife became ill and we weren't able to use it, so I decided to.
So we're motioning to move on. Second.
All right, second. All in favor? Give the gentleman more time here.
Anyway, just proceed. Okay, great. I was going to try to sell the property. And since there's been exemptions and variances and hardships and all, I have the for sale sign up there. I could have sold it 10 or 15 times so far, but I tell them they can't put an RV on there. They've been asked, could they put a RV on this, under this pole barn till they, if they want to buy the other lot and build a house? I said, no, you can only do like 14 days, I think it is. So as a hardship, I'm asking the board, can I get a exemption or a variance that I could sell this property?
Again, I would direct into the.
That would go through the planning board, then the proper procedure to ask for that, Mr. Mayo. And so the most important thing about 6C6 to understand is short-term. If a owner of a lot can demonstrate that they were collecting bed tax for a year prior to January of 2015, they'll qualify for the first exemption. If they can show that they had a long-term renter in there for more than six months prior to January of 2015, they can qualify for the second exemption. And then there's other requirements, but that is the most prevailing thing that anyone needs to come in and ask for. And you, Mr. Mayo, you'd go through the planning board, ask for the variance, and then come through the county commission. So I'd be happy to sit with you and go through upon whatever they adopt. Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayo, you understand, you use the word long-term rental, that it, that's more compatible to what you're, this ordinance, what you're in. It's written up there. It all sunsets come when December 31st.
Yeah, December, I seen that.
We can address it again.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, who made the motion? Second by Mr. Barnes, okay. All right, is any other, anyone else in the audience? If not, any opposition?
I'm opposed.
So the motion passed four to one. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, that's all I have for now.
All right, sir. Okay, let me get this now. Oh. Mr. Yeager, are you with us? Stella? I see you with us, if you'd like to join.
Yeah, I got Stella coming up.
Yeager, come right on up, please.
Stella from our consultant, Dewberry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, 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 there we go, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. As you know, this board had put out for public comment, 45-day public comment, our MYIP that you have approved. And we are back. We have, we complete the public comment period here in just a few minutes. We've got public comment about 50, 53 public comments, of which all of them but one, I think, were favorable to your MYIP. And what we're needing now is official approval of the board to submit this application or this MYIP on into the Treasury. And with that, I'll give it to Stella. I think there's a couple of things she wanted to mention because there will be a couple of technical things she'll have to put in there that's presently not in there.
Okay, Stella, I hear from you. Okay, thank you, Warren.
That's correct. As Mr. Yeager said, we're looking for approval of the MYIP to submit it to the U.S. Treasury. The requirements are significant public involvement, which I believe the board has met with your dozens and dozens of public RAC meetings over the past three years, and then eligible activities, which we have scrutinized that, and we believe that every activity that's included in the plan is eligible and should meet all of the eligibility requirements of the Treasury. Once, if you all approve today, it will be submitted to the Treasury. They have 90 days to review and approve it. They may issue comments and questions, or they may just approve it. That is obviously yet to be seen, but we will submit to them every copy of every public comment that was received during the 45 days because they have asked for that, and that'll be evidence of the public involvement you all gathered. We did have 52 public comments that were received in the last 45 days, all of which supported the allocation of funding of 2.8 million for the Beechtree Nourishment Project, which is the priority number one in your MYIP. We received one public comment that actually came in a couple of hours ago from an agency based out of Texas, I think it's the National Wildlife Federation, and they were not supportive of this version of the MYIP due to a couple of factors. I think that they felt there wasn't enough public involvement, which Warren and I discussed. I believe absolutely you all have gone way above and beyond on your public involvement, as evidenced by the 52 comments that were received and the dozens of public meetings. So with that said, we will submit them all to Treasury. We will do one more tweak to that copy that you have with you. There's a section in there where they ask us to describe all the comments received. When we printed this, we only described the 52, so we'll go in and add the one that we just received a few hours ago as well, and just let Treasury know we've got that one as well.
All right. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're open for questions or we're ready for approval. I've actually got a memorandum, but basically it states exactly what we've told you, is we need approval to move this process forward so we can get this on to Treasury. So need a motion or any questions that you might have.
We'll entertain a motion, then we go with any.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Commissioner McLemore. Do I hear a second for this approval? Second by Mr. Barnes. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. All right, now we open to the board discussion on, one on the board have any discussions?
I have a comment. I think that the National Wildlife Federation, that their issue was that we did go through a full public process, a lot of time. Ms. McElroy had addressed the board about this issue. She's on that Restor Act Committee, I believe, that a lot of people in this community had spent a lot of time going through the process, and then it was changed at the last minute. I think that was their position. That was their, what they were not happy about, that we did go through a lot of public process, but then we just changed it all without a lot of public process on the change. And I think that was probably not in the best interest of the public. A lot of people still don't understand what we have done after all of this time and energy put into putting these different projects together. And I do realize that these projects are still in the, in the, in the plan, but they've just been pushed back far. And I think also the Wildlife Federation questions the nature of the project and whether it fits into what these funds are supposed to be for, and they have asked for, and I'm reading this, I just got this also, and I'm reading it, but that they're asking for us to focus more on water quality and natural resource restoration. So I just want to make it clear that I think they have a good interest in mind. They like the acquisition of lands, they like the sewer projects and the stormwater management plan, which are things that are very important to a lot of folks in the community. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And everything was pushed back in favor of the Beechtree Nourishment, so I think that the way that we went about in the process was, it was incorrect as well. I mean, I agree with that.
Well, let me just say, I disagree with the writer of the email from the National Wildlife Federation. This organization is out of Texas. She has residence in Pensacola. She has attended one Restor Act Committee meeting in the, in the three years that she's been here. This is a restoration project. In one of her last comments, she said she would hope that Gulf County would do a restoration project. This is by definition, by the best available science, a restoration project. And on the public comment period, we did an extra 45-day public comment period, and I think that got out because we had 53 public comments. Walton County just went out for theirs, theirs ended today, they had zero. We had 53 public comments. So as far as the public understanding where we were at, we believe that, we believe that the local needs to make the decisions of where these monies are spent. That's why it rests on you as a board. You answer to the public of Gulf County. And we believe that we went through the right process. We'll defend the process right on through, going through.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing too?
Chair, hold here.
Because county staff's put a lot of time into this, and the fallacy that got spun in the last couple of months, there wasn't one other project that ranked on this that had any money, any match money. And under your own rules about the match money, this project has got four or five or even more times, for every dollar of restored money, other money's coming into this project. Not one of the other project. I'm 100% for the city of St. Joe and the city of Weewill Sewer Project. They don't have a penny to match. So under your own requirements, even with them, they would not be eligible today to move forward until they have at least, I think the cities were two to one, the rest of them are three to one. So none of these other projects, not one of them, have any money to match to move forward. This is a shovel-ready project that has got four-plus times multiplier, which is the exact thing that was stressed from day one on these projects. So the fallacy is that something got moved back or pushed around and whatnot. This is the only project that's ready, and it's the only project that meets the criteria that you set up and your committee set up from day one.
I know the city of Weewill, I've talked with all the commissioners, and they're not ready. I said, your money's there when you're ready. The city of St. Joe, they want to do it right. They know, they know, they know it's there, but this project is ready to go. City of Weewill is trying to get matching funds. As you stated, begin with, we got X number of dollars, let's reach out and try to get some matching funds or grants, and let's turn this little small amount of money into large sum of money. And I think we're doing that, and you would be commended, and you too, Stella and Brian, for working in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir, anything else?
I think just carrying that motion, we'll be ready to get everything ready to submit to Treasury.
All right, well, I still got to go to the public, okay.
Getting a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other motion? Yes, you did, and Commissioner Barnes, but anyone else in the public?
My only comment, when, oh, Kristy McElroy, 1311 Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe, Florida. My only comment is, I did look at your document that was submitted. I did not see the actual ratings of, and the scoring of all the projects in that document. Maybe I missed something, Commissioner? I mean, Warren, did I miss something?
No, I can't, I can't remember those technical scores.
Well, those scoring sheets were given to you guys. I worked on an application that had the highest scoring, highest rating, and I think in transparency, we need to also submit those to the Treasury. You do have a paragraph that talks about the rating process and the scoring process, but you don't have, and you do have, it mentioned 32 projects, but you don't have the ratings nor the scoring. And so while I was sitting back there, I went ahead and submitted my comments as well to Ms. Wilson and Mr. Yeager, but I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association President. This project was properly vetted all the way through. It was, from. It was, from the standpoint of the staff, to everyone else, this project has a seven to one match in terms of the money. And we've got commitment letters from DOT and DEP. That was what was gonna happen at the rocks. No other project has that. None of them are ready, and this is something that U.S. Fish, I mean, the wildlife people ought to be saying hallelujah about. We are restoring the wildlife for three endangered species, the turtles, four, two birds, and a mouse. And so, you know, basically, we are restoring habitat as well as restoring beaches. It met all the criterias. It was scored as the highest or higher than anything else in the project. I ask you to go ahead and move it forward. Let's get this thing going. We've got the state ready, we've got everybody else ready to come on with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right. I, that closes the discussion. Alright, it's time to vote on it. Motion by Commissioner McLemore, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, was for the approval. Is any objection?
I'm opposed.
Motion passed four to one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You got your, Mr. Jaeger, you got your vote now, you've known.
No, this has nothing to do with that. What it does is it got exactly to do with that. We have been working, and many counties know that they're going to need help doing these federal grants because the requirement of the MYIP is to submit a federal grant specifically to Treasury. And talking with staff, and talking with other counties, the only way to do that is to get a consultant and let them get the administration money on the grant writing themselves. So if y'all would allow staff, we'll put together an RFQ. You'll have the opportunity to vet those at some point, but I've been working with the attorney on that particular thing, Ms. Chairman, as part of the MYIP process, that once we get that MYIP approved, we'll need that federal grant writer, and all the other counties will need them too. So if y'all don't mind, if y'all give us permission to go through that process, we will, and y'all will have the opportunity to vote on that.
I know we've been working on it quite a bit. I've been involved with it.
That's correct.
A motion, Ms. Chairman. Alright, Commissioner McLemore, motion.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Barnes. There you go. Any further board discussion? One in the audience? Not in the opposition? Motion passed five and O. Mr. Butler?
Oh. Attorney, you gonna address? Yes, sir. The, I distributed to each of you the bond resolutions. Mr. Muschin, your bond counsel from Neighbors Giblin could not be down this evening, but he asked for the adoption of the authorizing resolutions on the heels of your last vote and your discussion. Back in May of this year, you adopted your initial resolution authorizing the commencement with the bond issuance for both the velorm and ad velorm. What I want to do is if I can, I'll read the limited ad velorm tax bond series two thousand sixteen by title. It is authorized under Articles Two and Five of your original resolution for supplemental resolutions. In essence, this resolution will now give the chairman and Ms. Norris, your clerk, the signing authority moving forward over the next couple of weeks. We recently received the judgment of the Judge Fischel validating your bond MSTU process, and this would be the next step. Unless there's any objection, I'll read it by title.
Uh, any objections? Many of the board members, not title.
Resolution, the Board of County Commissioners amending and supplementing resolution number two thousand sixteen oh eight of the county authorizing issuance of a not exceeding four million in aggregate principal amount of limited ad velorm tax bond series two thousand sixteen, Cape San Blas Beach Re-nourishment Project, Bayside, Gulfside, Beachfront, Gulfside Interior MSTUs. In order to finance certain beach improvements, making certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the issuance of such bonds, providing certain terms and details of such bonds, including authorizing negotiated sale of said bonds, and the execution and delivery of a bond purchase contract with respect thereto upon compliance with certain parameters appointed to paying agent and registered with respect to said bonds, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement with respect thereto, authorizing the execution and delivery of an insurance agreement, and a continuing disclosure certificate and providing an effective date. We'd ask for any discussion or questions of the commission.
I have a question. So this is the four million dollar bond that if people on the Cape approved, that they're gonna pay, or the one that the county is taking? Just for the public's knowledge.
This would be, this is not, this is not the one they approved. The other would be, the second one I'm gonna hand you is for the Cape MSTU.
Okay, so this is for the?
That's correct.
Just the general county?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any motion on that, Mr. Attorney?
Sir.
A motion, Ms. Chairman. Second by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Barnes. Other board discussion? One in the audience to adopt this resolution? And in the audience, any opposition?
I'm opposed.
Motion passed four to one. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, as you each receive, this is for the non-ad velorm revenue bond series. Again, the content, you also authorized the original resolution under Articles Two and Five. You allowed for supplemental resolutions as you move through this process. With the judicial validation for the MSTU application, I will now read the resolution by title, and again, this is the second for the second bond issue. It's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, amending and supplementing resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh nine of the county, which was adopted on May twenty-fourth, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding four million in aggregate principal amount of non-ad velorm revenue bond series two thousand sixteen, in order to finance certain beach improvements, making certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the issuance of such bonds, providing for certain terms and details of such bonds, including authorizing a negotiated sale of said bonds, and execution and delivery of a bond purchase contract with respect thereto upon compliance with certain parameters appointed to paying agent and register with respect to said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement with respect thereto, authorizing the execution and delivery of an insurance agreement and continuing disclosure certificate, and providing for an effective date. Any discussion or public comment, Mr. Chairman? And in following that, we'll send these up to Mr. Muschin so he can move forward with your next step.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to clarify. Mr. Attorney, I believe that this one is the one that is the county at large, and the first one was the one that was approved by the folks on the Cape.
Yeah, your limited ad velorm tax under two thousand sixteen dash oh eight, which would refer to Bayside, Gulfside, Beachfront, as you go down to different districts, would be the issuance of the taxes for the next ten years.
Yeah.
And in two thousand sixteen, your original oh nine, which is the second one I just read, which would be with regards to the ad velorm, the non-ad velorm, which would not be assessed against your MSTU districts.
Okay, well, what I had asked you was, is this the one that the folks on the Cape approved? And you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, it actually has in the title there.
I want to go on the record, I don't want to vote against what the people on the Cape voted for to tax themselves, which was the first one. Now, we're just being handed this as usual, you know, this is our procedure. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like the vote that we just took, I don't want to vote against what the people on the Cape voted for themselves. That's why I was trying to clarify the four million that the people voted to tax themselves and the four million at large. So I would like to go back to that vote. I would vote in favor of that. I would not vote opposed to what the people on the Cape voted to tax themselves. I asked for clarification from the attorney, but it was not correct. But before you vote on this one, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify that vote that we just took, that it would be a unanimous vote.
So you want to change, oh, yes?
Yes, sir.
On this is oh eight?
On?
Sixteen oh eight.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, alright, can you, Roberts, are you clear on that now?
Yes, sir.
You are, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, now we're gonna address twenty sixteen oh nine. Playing a thought, do what?
You have a motion for that one?
No.
A motion?
Do not. Motion by Commissioner McLemore?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Barnes, alright? Any other board member? Anyone? Alright, anyone in the audience on this one? Alright, having none? Any opposition?
I'm opposed.
Alright, twenty sixteen dash oh nine, pass it by, vote of four to one. Attorney?
That's all, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's oh nine. Change the other one to five oh. Mr. Whitfield, I think we're down to a bid award. So would you please come up and clean them out, or is that's alright? That's alright, we don't?
On the thirty-first, I put one of these in your box. It's a summary of our grant and our expenditures. We have one hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars on hand as of October the first. We went out for a bid for a new ambulance. We received one bidder, he met all our bid specifications. He gave us two options. Option one was a new demo, just like the spec called for. Option two would be a build, which would be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty daily time on it. I'm recommending that we take the demo, which can be delivered by the second week in October, for an amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand, one twenty-seven seventy-seven. I have a letter of recommendation in that packet for that. To get the biggest bang for our book, we went ahead and received separate bids on our cot and accessories for the ambulance, and this is a single source item from Stryker. This is what we use in our county, it's what all the surrounding counties also use. I have letters in the packet concerning a sole source distributor on that. The total for that is twenty-two thousand, nine sixty-six ninety-nine.
Right, sir.
And the third letter I have in your pack is for the new radios for the ambulance. We got a price from First Communications, they're doing all our radio work now. These radios are gonna be compatible with the new digital system that we're having soon.
We'll have the digital.
Yes. So the analog or digital, they go both ways. Two thousand, two hundred seventeen fifty-one. That gives us a total of one hundred seventy-three thousand, three twelve twenty-seven, and that leaves a twenty dollars and seventy-three cent in the grant.
Down to twenty dollars, eh?
So we used it up.
A motion, Ms. Chairman.
Alright, Houston, will you be, just do your recommendation, Mr.?
Yeah, I recommend you take the whole package.
Alright, so we have a motion right over here by Commissioner McLemore.
A second.
I got a second by Comi, Brian, any other? We just say we really, we need these people. Now, this ambulance will be housed here in St. Joe, is that correct?
We'll be getting rid of one of our big monsters.
Alright, so that'll give us two?
Two.
Brand-new?
Roadworthy ambulances.
Ambulances here, and well, it'll give us three, but we'll have two brand-new ones for this end of the county. Alright, Houston, thank you, and thank you for all the work. Any other discussion, anyone on this ambulance? Here, anyone in the audience? Alright, if there's no opposition?
Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
We just need to make certain that the money's in this year's budget. If not, it needs to come out next year's budget.
You have to fund what's in the capital in order to match the forty-three.
Houston.
Houston, let's get this, just a minute.
Mr. Whitfield.
Alright, now, that's, that's alright, just lay it up there.
Is the money in the current year's budget, Houston?
Yes, we have the matching money in hand from the state, well, we have the grant in hand from the state, and the matching money's in this month, this year's budget coming up in October.
This next, you have to.
The capital.
So nothing will be received prior to October one, it'll all be after October one?
Right.
In order to award the bid, have to fund the capital in front of the budget that you're gonna vote on later tonight, so just so that you know that.
Is it in the budget?
It is.
It's listed in the capital.
My motion then would be to approve it, hint that it's in the budget that we're gonna hear tonight.
Alright, so you're gonna amend your?
Yeah.
Motion.
If the budget passes tonight, there won't be any problem.
Right, just ambulance, okay.
It don't pass, if it don't pass, then we have a problem.
Well, you also in previous, uh, board meetings, approved the supply for the grant, which really approved, applying for the, I mean, setting aside the matching money.
We got a, we got a, what is it, forty-three?
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand.
Okay, so we approved that.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be no, shouldn't be no issue then? Can move right on?
That's right. Is it in the budget we're in now, or is it in the?
If you approve this tonight, you must, in the budget meeting, after this meeting, approve the forty-three thousand, three thirty, three thirty-three. In addition to that, you must approve this radio budget that's also in there that's not in, that's part of this, so that's.
Well, no, that radio is included in this, in the grant.
What's the bottom line of this gonna, we gotta come out of the, from the taxpayer? Forty-three thousand?
Forty-three thousand, three thirty, three thirty-three.
That's a number I'm.
Is it in the budget?
It is in this next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
We'll vote on that.
October.
That's where you need, not getting the ambulance still, we could've had the ambulance, but we did, and we've delayed it over, blocked over. We'd be in the new budget.
I think we still have a question or concern about where it's coming from, and if it's in the, if it's in the grant agreement, the radios. I don't believe the radios are in the grant agreement. I believe it's the ambulance, the Stryker cot, and the Stryker list.
The ambulance, the radios are also included in that, but October, the state grant.
I would just say contingent upon it being approved within the grant, because if the grant money's not there, then you would actually have to come up with more match money.
That makes sense, so that.
Contingent on approved budget and the grant agreement.
If we run into a snag, then it don't pass.
Alright, are we still on our previous play review? Are we ready to move on here? Okay, what? My motion was, and you amended it.
A mo, a motion is to approve Mr. Whitfield's request contingent upon that it's in the budget, if the budget passes this year, this, tonight, alright, we'll be good. Right? Right. If it's not, if it don't pass, then we have a issue. It will not.
Well, in previous meetings, you approved us.
Yeah, but Houston, I don't care, I don't care, we dealing with this tonight, okay?
Alright. Let us get this motion. The motion's by Commissioner McLemore, approved, pending. Your second stands, alright? Any other questions from any other board members? Anyone in the audience? If not, is any opposition? The motion passes five and O. We'll clear this up in about eleven minutes, hopefully. Alright, thank you, Houston. Mrs. Norris, you have any, or anything? Is everything good over here now? Clear this up here. Next, yeah. Alright, at this time, Mr. Nelson, are you with us? Marshall? Tropical storm, I mean, if county lucked out, a little bit of beach damage, but all in all, we came out a lot better than.
That stayed a merger, don't it, Mr. Chairman and Attorney? It just runs out.
It runs out. I think it lasts seven days, and it's over.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything on that.
In effect, I think Wednesday. It'll run out.
Yeah.
Okay.
That it?
Uh, I'm going to take just a minute, we don't have but a little bit, we gotta go in another meeting. Anyone in the public? If you had one person ask if something's very important, if you would come up and try to keep it condensed, take your time, please.
Okay, for me to give the report on the committee, I suppose. Basically, I just wanted to report to you on the first FEMA flood map committee meeting that we had, August thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. Pat Hardman, Brett Lowery, Don Butler, you were called in and out because of the storm. We also had by invitation Bo Springs, who is the Gulf County Representative for the Northwest Florida Management, Water Management District Commission. George Kennedy was there from the Building Department, Jim Anderson was there, several Gulf County residents, representatives from North Florida Water Management Staff were there, Brett Cypher was the spokesman, and by phone we had Dube. Brett Cypher was the spokesman, and by phone, we had Duberry, who is a consultant for the Northwest Florida Management System. Number of topics came up, uh, in relation to the three thousand properties that are moved from X to A E or V E, uh, into Gulf County. Uh, possibility of many of the fixed or moderate or low-income folks loo- losing their homes as a result of the increased ta- uh, insurance costs, that's, that's going to occur. There's also some properties that are gonna move from an A E to a V E, which increases that. Duberry and FEMA, uh, Duberry and, and Northwest Florida Management are putting this in place for FEMA, but they have no ability to change what FEMA has proposed. But what they said that they would do is to help us in any possible way, uh, to challenge these changes that are coming up. So, then we got to what was feasible to challenge and what wasn't. Um, they are going to provide our planning, they, they agreed to certain things, and, and some of these were good 'cause it stopped the clock on one thing. Um, they're gonna provide our planning department, Brett had a problem with the A E properties. That means properties that are in flood plain that are gonna get rising water. V E is properties that are gonna get water hit, uh, this way, uh, hitting water velocity. Um, and so, basically, they, we don't have some numbers on the A E. This has to do with, with insurance rates as well as building. So, they're gonna provide those. We ask them a possibility of, of reevaluating properties that the committee could identify as possibly being able to be left in the X zone because of the models that are used to decide whether something's in an X, an A E or V E. That, that meaning that there is a coastal inland wave model that, that can be applied as whether or not you're in one of these zones. The maps are LIDAR, L-I-D-A-R maps, which are the best that you can get right now. They're within six inches, but they're ten years old. And the difference is, is that if you've got the coastal wave model on top of that, if properties have been built in front of you, let's say you were on a second or third tier, uh, out, out at Saint Joe Beach, and you've had properties built in front of you, that coastal wave model may say, okay, you're not gonna have to change your position. Same thing would happen on the number of Mount Cape and, and Indian Pass. Um, the only other way that you can get better data is to have an individual survey. This gets relatively complicated because you're gonna have to have elevation certificate. We questioned whether or not there would be any way we could do anything about that, and they're going to look into whether or not there's any funding anywhere that might allow low-income or moderate-income individuals to be able to get that evidence. Um, if there's any assistance from the governor or the state in that regard. One of the other things was they're not gonna char- start the ninety-day challenge period until the issues of reevaluation are completed. So, that stopped that clock in, in terms of, of people having to go out and try to figure out how to get flood. Um, the last thing was that we're gonna work closely with us to determine any other feasible measures to be done to challenge the proposed maps and, um, make sure that every person in Gulf County who is going to have a change that would create a problem for them or extra cost for them is notified and informed in some way that they can understand it. It's so complex to try to figure out what the insurance rates are gonna be, when you have to do what, that we're gonna try to develop a very systematic way to do that. So, it was a very productive meeting with them. We need to move forward. We need to stay on it. The recommendations were that if, if you would, Ward, uh, Commissioner McDaniel, uh, to expand that, that little committee a little bit for us, put, uh, Bo Springs on there, who is the representative for Northwest Florida Water Management for Gulf County, and a representative from the city of Port Saint Joe, and a representative from the city of Weewall. And let us get together as soon as we can with Brett and try to determine what properties we want them to, uh, reevaluate. Uh, the other was to have a FEMA insurance representative come down and give us very succinct ways that this thing is gonna be put in place and how people are gonna be able to mitigate anything if, at all. Um, the committee worked with Brett to consider the properties throughout the county. This is not just, it's, it's all, all over, uh, to, to be appropriate, to have Duberry redo. And to develop timelines in reference to the proposed map that will become new flood maps and, and that, and then communicate those timelines out to the community. So, that's, that's basically what we did at our first meeting. So...
Yeah, I sat in on some of it, and I had to leave because of the thing, but it's complicated. It is complicated. I don't even think they know what they're doing.
Well, you know, but if we can, if we can take five or six hundred of those properties off of the, off of that change, we've got a whole-
That'd be great.
And if you've got somebody that would be shifted to an, uh, V E and will be able to stay in an A E, you'd be saving them thousands of dollars.
Sure.
So, it's worth the effort to try to keep going, and at some point, we may wanna go have a meeting with the governor and, uh, hauls in, um, I got two minutes, hauls in, in Montford and say, "What can you do to help us?" Because it, it's, it's not just our county. It's all over.
Right. Thank you, man. All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will take a, that concludes our special meeting. We convene here for the first public hearing on our proposed tentative budget. We're gonna, of course, we have to wait to five oh one, but Ms. Roberts has to do some wrecking, some wreckings over here and get set up for it, so it may be in after before we, well, uh-
Did I say something?
Sure you can.
I forgot it. I had wrote it down.
Oh, well, go ahead.
I wanna thank Roberts and Roberts because they, they had an inloader down-
They did.
And an operator, and, uh, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I forgot it.
Oh, that's fine. That's, all right, okay. Special meeting had gone.